Good evening, everyone. This is the briefing meeting of the West Jordan City Planning and Zoning Commission on June 18th, 2024. All commissioners are present with the exception of Hollingsworth and Roberts. Let's begin by taking a quick look at the agenda for a moment. We have on here approval of minutes, Cal Ranch Greenhouse, Valley View Office, and Victory Builders Rezone, and a text amendment to discuss. So, any commissioners have any questions about anything on the agenda? Okay, then we will proceed with the briefing. Any questions concerned about the minutes? All right, then let's have a overview of the Cal Ranch application from Megan Jensen.
Yes, thank you. So, this is a temporary use permit and they have a 90-day administrative temporary use permit, and they would just like to extend it longer to the 150-day. And so they're already operating. It's a greenhouse on Cal Ranch. And so, and then the start date will just be the original start date and go until August.
So Chair, can we dispense with the overviews of the projects and get to the training tonight? Dave Clements, our real property administrator, asked him to come and, you know, train and everything you're going to hear from the planners, you'll hear again in the meeting. So I don't think anything is really terribly...
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Anyway.
Proceed with the training.
Controversial, so I would just ask that, so.
Thank you, yeah. Do we need to do anything officially to make that change?
You can just, the Chair can just call for the training.
I call for the training.
And so, like I said, Dave is a real property administrator and he's worked on and off with the city for many years. He'll let you know. And then, but he carries a vital role to the city that, you know, in your role as planners, you often, you probably never understand what he does, but, you know, he does all the real estate transactions for the city and everything that you approve ultimately ends in some type of real estate transaction. And so I've asked him to come and explain a little bit about that. And actually, the last item, the text amendment, kind of goes into that where just because the city gives approval of a text or a lot line adjustment doesn't necessarily mean that it results in a real estate transaction. There's another step that needs to be taken by the property owner. And so there is a line of demarcation between the two. And so hopefully Dave will explain that. You know, feel free to ask questions at any time. But he's just a wealth of knowledge and not all cities have his position. And I don't know how they function without it, to be truthful. So Dave, I'll let you, and Scott, if you want to say something, you're fine, but.
Thank you. I have never been to a planning commission, so this is as new for me as it is for you to hear from me. So, but thank you Larry for the introduction to his point. I, this position here at the city was created in 2006. It didn't exist before that. The city was having challenges. You might recall back in 2006, there was quite the boom going on from a real estate perspective, and the city was struggling with some issues that it didn't know how to wrap its hands around. So it decided to hire a position, create a new position, and that's, that's how I came to the city of West Jordan. But I, I will just give some really high-level, I guess, ideas of what I do for the city. I'm going to do a little PowerPoint presentation. It doesn't really describe everything that I do, but it'll give you a good feel for how I kind of view my role at the city, what I've been asked to do for the city, and, and maybe a few examples of, of how I do that and why I do that. So just starting here, my role has been broken down really into three main functions. I mean, there's some outliers, but for the most part, my role fits into capital projects, development review, and property management. Under capital projects, you'll see that I've got listed there, there are some voluntary capital projects and some involuntary, meaning on occasion we use eminent domain, and that's my role to pursue that until it gets to the point, since I'm not an attorney, that we hand it over to the city attorney's office. But I, my role for the city is to negotiate and acquire property. And with that comes the challenges of sometimes you don't have sellers that are willing to participate. But some, the idea is to really pitch the projects the city wants to do and the public good that comes from those projects, and hopefully meet somewhere in the middle on a negotiated settlement. But those projects include roads. Right now, we have going 1300 West. Some of you might know that. We're in the process of trying to widen different phases of that road. 7800 South, we're getting ready to start a widening project at about 5600 West, all the way out to U-111. We thought we completed the 8600 South Bridge. It's not open yet. You might know that as well. But I, I did all the acquisitions for the, on the property for that proper project. And then the 70th South Pedestrian Bridge, these are just a few. We have other projects that are going, but these are just a few highlight projects. The property for the 7800 South Pedestrian Bridge is completed. We're simply waiting to construct. Sometimes we just have utility projects. A few years ago, we completed what's called the Highlands Loop Water Line. It looped a water line from the new Copper Rim Water Tank over to 700 South through what is now known as Park Valley Town Homes. You might, some of you might know what that is. And then we have what's called the Barney's Wash Detention. We need to actually expand that detention basin. That's an ongoing project. And then I work a lot with our streetlights department, who is trying to improve the lighting situation in many, many old, old neighborhoods where the lighting just isn't sufficient. I buy property for water tanks. We, we bought a site for the Copper Rim Water Line, which is what I call our Zone 3 Water Tank. Some of you might know, we're needing water out west further. So I'm working right now with a developer on acquiring the Zone 5 North Tank, which is part of the, I think it's now called the Terrain West Bench Project. It used to be called Woods Ranch. We just completed the Zone 5 South Water Tank Purchase last fall, and just completed the cemetery water tank property purchase last fall as well. Buy property for buildings, fire stations, the arts center. Some of you might know about the arts center and the conundrum that has perplexed the city that is the arts center. I've been involved, I typically work behind the scenes, but I bought property north of 78th, which was the old 7800 South Salt Lake County Library, bought that and then sold it again, since it didn't go there. And, and obviously we're building it where it is now. But, so whenever there's a capital building project that needs to be built, typically I'm working behind the scenes to try to make that happen. I work to buy parks and trails. We've got the Big Bend Project, the Jordan River Trail System, the Skate Park, which will need additional property. And right now on our radar is Utah Lake Distributing Canal Trail that we're probing to see if we can build a trail on. And then I work for the RDA when they have a need. Right now, we just bought a house across the street you might be familiar with to kind of help better establish the city center project. The little white house across the street is the next, one right next to the tracks. It's the last residential unit on Redwood within the city center project. We're getting ready, in fact, we're getting ready to demolish that house. But we purchased that just a month or so ago. I purchased property for the city to put in an auto mall. That was the dream. Right now it has Truck Ranch. Some of you might be familiar with Truck Ranch. And then I purchased the property just north of it, 30 acres, 30-plus acres. It's called the Bowden Vest Property. He was the seller. Right now, we're working with a developer on at least a portion of it. So those are the capital projects that I'm currently working on or have recently worked on. And we, our capital facilities master plan, if you've seen that, will show you other projects that are coming down the pipe that I'll be working on. For development review, I have really one primary function, and that is to make sure that any property that's exacted or dedicated to the city is done so in a manner that meets state code and city code and, and has done so in a way that it won't put the city's property rights in jeopardy. So just to give you an example, when I first came here, and one of the reasons they hired this position was because the city was losing some property to tax foreclosure. You might wonder, how's that possible? The city doesn't pay taxes. How can the city's property be foreclosed on? The problem is, if the city accepts property where taxes were owed before it was dedicated, then those taxes become due at a given period of time, and the city is now on the hook to pay those. And so the city didn't have anyone really that could wrap their arms around that and a whole bunch of other issues. And, and so the city was losing property to tax foreclosure, and that was one of the impetus events that created this position. So when I review property for, in the development process, for example, roads, we, right now we have a 90 South Dedication Plat, an 86 South Dedication Plat, a 6600 West Dedication Plat that are coming in. My role is to make sure that the property is dedicated in a manner that's the least risky for the city to accept. So that's generally done by reviewing a title report, making sure taxes, taxes are cleared and those no mortgages, et cetera. Same thing with parks and open space. We've got the Wood Ranch TSOD parcels, which are open space parcels. Any parks in the Dry Creek Highlands, that's my role to review strictly from a dedication standpoint. I don't review it from a planning standpoint, an engineering standpoint, primarily just the dedication or the exaction standpoint. And then I, I create documents for the city. I create easements if we have offsite. Hey Mayor. Create havoc, right? Water, sewer storm, anytime we have utility easements that are necessary to serve, sometimes these off, these roads, parks, utilities, sometimes they're not confined within a subdivision, they're not confined within a site plan. I produce the documents that go out and get those to serve those, those new development approvals. So like I said, my primary purpose is to clear title, make sure taxes, liens, mortgages are cleared. There's no other third-party claimant. Sometimes there's multiple owners. Every owner has to sign. And then finally, one role that the city asked me to play many years ago, when I, I didn't come to the city to do development review. I primarily came to manage property and buy property, but I became kind of this resource for research, for our utility, our utility services divisions, and noticed that many of the old plats had notations that were very nondescript. They would say water easement, sewer easement, drainage easement, but it didn't say in favor of who, who have benefited, who, what the terms were. So many years ago, one of our Public Works Directors asked me if I would just play a role in making sure those notations are clear so that everybody understands if there's an easement on the plat, whose is it, what are the terms, et cetera. So that's one of my roles. And then finally, while you probably wouldn't notice it, while I rarely put conditions of approval on a subdivision preliminary, a preliminary subdivision that comes to the planning commission, I do on occasion do that, but I usually work through the planner. I usually don't have my own conditions of approval at the preliminary level. Most of my stuff takes place at the final approval stage. But occasionally, for one reason or another, usually a concern that has to do with clearing title or making sure that we receive property that's the least risky, I'll ask the planner to insert a specific sentence in the planning, "conditions of approval that's brought to you folks." And they're always really good to do that. And then property management is the third element, the third prong, I would say. And that involves leases. We have cell towers on city property. I've worked on the West Jordan Historic, Historical Museum, the Arts Center. And when I say Arts Center, we're currently leasing space in what's our old facilities building. I wrote that lease for the arts complex to store the material, build sets, things like that. The Go-Go Hut, which is out at Public Works on, on city property in Bloomfield Heights, it's a piece of property we own, but we don't maintain it very well according to the adjacent owners. So they, they, they decided to lease it from us for a dollar a year, and they maintain it to a level that makes them feel happy. Like I said, I, I produce easements. We have easements, recent easements on city property. We recently granted an easement for, for Kennicott for their water system across the Old Rock Church property. Century Link on property out here at Veterans Memorial Parks, the Skoda Tower out at really far west, we granted an easement to Rocky Mountain Power, and Dominion Energy was plugging along for an easement across city property, across the old Fire Station 51, but they abandoned it. But I create those documents for the city. We sell surplus property. Obviously, the Truck Mall was the most recent, Truck Ranch was the most recent. We sold property to them. We have a well number one, which has been abandoned and dormant for a long time, just waiting for the trigger to give me the go-ahead to sell that site, for an example. A lot of my time is spent on research for city departments, city divisions, involve jurisdictional issues, whether it's annexation boundaries, to see if they're accurate. Sometimes they're not. We learned that in a court case we were involved in in 2010. And, but also, street jurisdictions. UDOT owns roads in our, roads in our city, and so it's kind of my job to know which roads are city roads and which roads are UDOT roads. I do research for streets, utilities, parks, police, fire, finance, code enforcement, community development, block grant, and the city attorney's office. Pretty much the only department I don't do research for is IT. And so there's no reciprocal help there. They help me. I don't help them. Sorry, IT. I work on trespass issues. We recently sent letters to people trespassing in Barney's Wash. We had issues with Bateman Pond, Vista West. We've got issues all over the city actually with trespassing, and so that's kind of one of the issues I handle. Franchise agreements, we have utility companies, telecoms, all throughout the city's rights of ways, and it's one of my roles has been historically to manage that beast that it's become. It's incredibly challenging because we only have a finite amount of space and a lot of telecoms that have come alive. So that's become a challenging endeavor, but. And then act as the government liaison for UDOT, Rocky Mountain Power, a lot of the telecoms, Salt Lake County. Just because I do so much with property, I often get a lot of phone calls from these folks and just kind of route phone calls to the right departments. But that's, it creates research for me as well to find out who to get them to. So my, the research arm on the property management side is as busy as capital projects and as busy as development review.
Yeah, and you know, one of the things, you know, Dave put trespass on there, and it doesn't mean people just walking across that property. It's more of a, I would say, a conquering of the property than it is trespass, because people build things on it, and they've built whole structures and fire pits, sheds. And so, you know, somebody's got to go out and be the bearer of bad news that, you know, I think, didn't you have someone that was attempting to build a swimming pool or something on?
Yeah, thank you Larry. That's actually a really good point. That's, I hadn't thought about that. But yeah, so trespassing is not simply someone walking across city property. We've got structures on city property. In fact, someone did build a pool on city property many years ago knowingly and willingly, and, and claimed that they had adverse possession by time. And I, with a smile, told them that they couldn't get adverse possession against city property legally. And we had that conversation and they ended, well, they actually took an extra acre for their garden. So they couldn't afford to buy everything, so they removed the garden and we sold them the pool area. This is out west. So try to be as helpful and friendly and kind as possible, but yet reserve city rights to taxpayer property. So, and sometimes you can't sell the property because it's a flood hazard, and that's the one that I put up there for Barney's Wash. It's a flood hazard. So we've got some bad news for some folks that spent a lot of money building rock walls, fire pits, like Larry said, trampolines, and all kinds of structures on city property that have, now have to be moved. I, I pulled up a map that might be helpful for you to see. It's a little smaller than I would like, but I really wanted to try to encapsulate some, some of the things that I've worked on that are really all in one area, but it took many years to do. So 5600 West, for those of you who have been here long enough, between 70th and 78th, it didn't exist. It was just a field until about 2014, 2015. And so that section between 70th and 78th, I bought all that property for the city mostly over the space of about three years. Interestingly, one of the ways I buy property is obviously city funding is one element, but we also go out and get UDOT funding or state funding. We get federal funding. And in this case, most of the west side of that road, 5600 West through, through this section was purchased with what's called corridor preservation money. And if you, if you're familiar with the Council of Governments and COG and corridor preservation, it's a funding source that is used specifically for corridors, to preserve corridors, road, road rights of way, that are arterials and other master planned, regionally significant corridors. And so in this stretch, we were able to gain about $2.2 million in corridor preservation funds that didn't come out of the city funds, didn't come from state beds. And it was a really important resource to help secure the right of way for this section. Of course, there were about another dozen properties I had to buy with city funds, but over half of it was purchased with corridor preservation money. That was a really important function. But this, this project also, you'll notice, three minutes, okay. You'll notice that, well, it's really small, but at the bottom of the page, you'll see a Rocky Mountain Power substation on 78th. We just purchased that. We had to use eminent domain, at least as a threat. The city council passed an eminent domain resolution to condemn the Rocky Mountain Power Substation property if necessary, in order to make 7800 South a little wider. And because of their ability to, and desire to condemn it, we were able to secure that property much quicker than normal. You'll notice at Park Valley Town Homes, there's a road that connects to Copper Rim. That was a road that took a lot more review than normal, just because there's so much activity going through their gas lines, Rocky Mountain Power power lines, a lot of utilities. So clearing title on that particular project was really challenging. There are some other elements there, but due to time, I'll cut it off there. And just let you know, I formally report to Scott Langford, he's my director, so I'm under the Community Development Department. But all of my documentation, all of my, I'm not an attorney, so everything that I do really goes through the city attorney's office. His license is on the line if I mess up. So, but he really reviews and approves all of my documentation. I'm bound by Code of Federal Regulations, Utah codes, I've got the titles up there, city codes, and ultimately the United States and Utah constitutions, which state that the city can't take property without paying for it, right? Save exactions, which is a necessity based on the burden a development might put on the community. And I think I covered the funding element. These are just a few, I guess, statistics. We have 500 total acres, nearly 500 acres of city property. 400 of that is in parks, through 48 total parks and about 400 lane miles that we manage, which doesn't seem like a lot, and it really isn't, but is a lot when you consider how much undevelopable land is left in West Jordan and how active it is. So while I wouldn't classify or statistically, we have a lot of property to, to deal with, the amount of activity we have because of the amount of undevelopable land that's remaining makes it challenging. So thank you for entertaining my time here.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. This is a very valuable presentation. I'm glad we got to hear this. It's another evidence to me that people like me who don't work in a city, we just reside in a city, there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that we don't know anything about. And I for one appreciate that very much. I do have a question for you, just for clarification.
Yes.
I was under the impression that the 7000 South overpass was to be a road, but you labeled it in your presentation as a pedestrian overpass. So it's pedestrians only?
The 7000 South overpass at the elementary school?
Over...
At about 14th West, 15th West?
No, over, over Mountain View.
That will become a traveled, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. Over Mountain View will be a road for car, pedestrian traffic and cars and bikes, once, once it's designed and constructed. The pedestrian path I was talking about is at, near Heartland Elementary.
Okay.
On 70th South for the pedestrian specific.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Clements? Okay, our briefing meeting is over now, and we will call to order our, our official planning commission meeting for June 18th, 2024. Commissioners Hollingsworth and Roberts are absent. The rest of us are here. Let's proceed immediately to review and approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any questions concerned or comments about the minutes? Commissioner Allen?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is Cal Ranch Greenhouse Temporary Use Permit with the eight criteria for approval that must be met. Presenter is Amy Evans? Megan? What?
Since this was listed as a consent calendar, the applicant is not here. But we do have a staff presenter.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So this is for a temporary use permit for a greenhouse at the Cal Ranch parking lot, address 2735 West, 7800 South. So they originally got a temporary use permit just administratively for 90 days on March 15th. So this will just be to extend what they're already doing. They're not changing anything. But this is the site. It'll be on that east side of their parking lot in a commercial zone. And it's pretty simple. It's just a greenhouse selling plants and soil and things. The greenhouse is 20 by 40. So yeah, it will go until August 12th will be the end date. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
This might be more for Larry or Duncan, but I understand the temporary permit, it's already past the temporary permit time, right? So technically they're not within a permitted time right now, albeit this is coming through. And it's going to, anyway. The 90 days, can, can we work with that and make some changes to city code so this doesn't have to come back as regularly as it does? Happens every, what, about once a year? We see something like this?
Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, but this is for the period between the 90 and the 150, right? And, and of course, it is a consent item, so you don't have to discuss it necessarily, right? You could just approve it, all in one motion with the minutes in this. But Larry could probably discuss that further.
That's correct.
Can't we just go ahead and extend that period as far as an administrative action? I know it has to go before the city council. No, no, but I mean to extend it permanently. Change the code. That's what Ammon was talking about.
You could certainly recommend a code amendment. The commissioners have the authority to do that. And I don't know if they need a formal... And, uh, I don't know if they need a formal motion as a group to direct us to create that amendment. And if you did, my recommend, it would be good to clearly understand what the intent of the commission was, you know, what length, et cetera.
So Commissioner Allen, you've been around a long time, so you're saying that you've seen this come up a number of times? And requires the applicant to come back every time to ask for an extension?
Uh, he comes up about once a year, I think, but we, we've already spent more time just talking about it that it would, you know, on an annual basis go through. So it's probably not too big of a deal. It was just more of a, a question that, uh, if we could just modify that and not worry about it. But, uh, if it's appropriate, I would suggest getting a training on the ninety or one fifty days and why, maybe some of the reasons that makes sense, uh, and then we could go from there, but.
And I think, um, well, I know a lot of the, or read. So made the original intent of the ordinance and so, but yeah, that'd be a good training, I think, to bring to the planning commission before a recommendation is made to the council to change an ordinance, you know, because you might just look at it from a very high level view and not understand or may not be realized some of the unintended consequences of changing. There could be a really bad party that you have a chance to get rid of, and now you don't have a chance to get rid of them. And so anyway, yeah, I'll put that down on my list, so.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Uh, I move that we approve, uh, oh, based on the informations and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence explanations received today, I move the planning commission approve the temporary use permit for the Cal Ranch greenhouse located at twenty-seven thirty-five west, seventy-eight hundred south in an SC two zone with conditions of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve this item. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And we will look forward to a training on that, uh, ninety day rule sometime in the near future. Thank you. Next item is, uh, public hearing item for, with final action by the planning commission, Valley View Office on, uh, seventy-five forty-five south Temple, which is thirteen hundred west. Um, Doug Young? Are you Doug? Would you like to step to the microphone here and, uh, tell us all about your application? State your name, please.
My name is Bob, an engineering representative, Doug Young. He's, uh, building a, uh, office extension for the South Valley Reclamation property. It's a little over ten thousand square foot, single, uh, level building and, uh, associated on the existing six acre site. He's taken about an acre of that property and developing for the extended office space for the use of the South Valley services. Um, and essentially we've, uh, met code on the, uh, public parking or the public and the parking of the site and additional fire access. And so I think staff has reported on, on that and appears to be in favor of support of the, the building. And thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Megan?
Yes, thank you. So, um, like I said, this is just adjacent to the South Valley wastewater, um, treatment plant. And the whole site is about a little over six acres and they'll just be developing one acre in the northeastern corner of it. So the zoning is business research park and the future land use is professional office, so it meets the zoning. They will have access off of seventy-four hundred south, which is a private driveway, basically. So they're getting all the easements for that and everything. The building is, like was said, about ten thousand six hundred square feet, um, with the very tallest point being twenty feet high. Go to the renderings. Um, so this is essentially what it will look like. And they are meeting parking, um, thirty-one stalls required and thirty-one are shown. Um, they have two accesses onto that private road and they are required to make a pedestrian path to, um, Temple Drive. So they will be putting that in to connect to their, um, main entrance. Um, there are, um, residential homes to the north of it, but, um, it's across the street and there is a masonry wall there existing. And that is all I have. If you have any questions for me.
Commissioner Hatch?
A random question, um, and the barn door is already open, but why was this, um, zoned as business or as professional? It looks to me like it should have been residential. It just, since it's sitting between both and, and maybe that's just a rhetorical question. Um, it just seems odd to put a business building in between, on a residential area with homes to the north and to the south. Is that?
Um, I'm not exactly sure actually on the history of it. Um, it is owned by South Valley Water Reclamation, so, and this will service, you know, for their staff and everything, administrative staff, so that'll be the use, but yeah, that's.
And, and that makes sense. It was just odd to me that there's residential on both sides, but thank you for answering my question.
And my understanding could, I kind of know a little bit of the history of that, since that's my neighbors. Um, when they originally actually did that, that's exactly for, they wanted to put some offices that was for the South Valley Sewer District. So I think that's why originally it was all zoned that way. Cause it's been zoned like that way ever since I've lived in that neighborhood, which is now going on twenty plus years, actually thirty years, sorry.
Yeah, I looked, I looked back and it's been zoned that way forever. It just seems odd to me. Thank you.
Even when we were looking at buying our house back thirty years ago, that's exactly what it was already zoned as. And so, I mean, that's my understanding, so.
Anything else, Megan?
Uh, no, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. This item was noticed for public hearing. So we will now open the phones and the zoom to public comment and the floor. If there's anybody here, I don't see anybody, but. Is there anybody on the phone or on zoom that would like to comment? Julie says no. So we are ready now to entertain a motion. Excuse me, we're, we have, we will now close public hearing. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I got just one quick question, and this is probably for the, the engineer. Where that is such a slope on the parking, are they going to build that up a little bit or?
Yeah, we've actually, uh, cut down the higher side a little bit, uh, so we can flatten the grade out.
Okay. I mean, it all, the water would rush back into the sewer treatment plant, but hey. I'll go ahead and make a motion if nobody's got any other questions. Based on the findings set forth on the staff report, I move that the planning commission approved the preliminary site plan for Valley View Office located at seventy-five forty-five south, Temple Drive, thirteen hundred west, with the conditions and requirements of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion is unanimous. The next item is also a public hearing item with planning commission recommendation to the city council for Victory Builders rezone of two point five four acres on nine thousand south. Uh, speaking on behalf of Victory Builders should be somebody.
Tanner Hanson, and he's here.
Step, step up, please. Tanner Hanson, there's the name.
Yeah, so we're proposed to do a rezone from SC one and SC two. Uh, that, that land is broken up into three different zones or two different zones, three different lots, uh, to go to a CG zone. And the reason being is we are, buildings that are proposed are set to cover just over forty percent of the, of the land. And the SC one and SC two allow to thirty percent. So that is the reason for the rezone.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Uh, I'll, uh, I do have a question. Um, so you've owned this property for a long time, I take it?
Actually, no, no, we haven't. The, the, the previous owner, uh, has owned it for quite a long time. And the, the reason why it's been sitting for quite a while is because of the shape and the buildings we specialize in are perfect for that kind. This is the kind of land that we look out for. Uh, our buildings are perfect for small businesses. We call them small business incubators for, for the building type. Uh, perfect, in West Jordan alone, as Larry and I have discussed, there's a lot of small businesses that are currently doing business out of their home and our buildings are perfect for them to get out of their home, keep businesses here in West Jordan and help them thrive and grow their business into sustainable, long-term businesses, instead of just doing it out of their house. And the, and the, the site, the, the land alone is perfect for that. And, uh, we call them, uh, retail flex. Uh, it allows retail buildings out of there and still have the functionality to allow them to thrive going forward. As you can see, the, the plan has that long skinny portion in the front, the L shape, uh, is, it's actually pretty visible from ninety south. So we do want that to be aesthetically pleasing. We, we feel like it's a perfect, perfect spot for our buildings and for businesses, especially with H Mart going in, Home Depot right there, a lot of the new growth in that area. Should be a perfect fit. We're, we're excited that H Mart has come around and that, that's been really busy. It's been great to see, so. And any questions on, on anything like that?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanson. We'll have you back if we have other questions. Uh, Taylor or Todd? Taylor?
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, you've already kind of touched this, I'll go quick, but it's, uh, about two and a half acres. Uh, currently split zoning between SC one and SC two. They're proposing to go to that general commercial CG zone. Um, as he mentioned, the site is three parcels and it's located next to the H Mart behind, uh, there's, uh, Quick Quack and some other uses, Big Five, um, in the area. It's also behind, uh, a townhome development and an LDS chapel. As mentioned, zoning there is going to CG. Um, the uses that he's proposing are allowed under the current zoning. Um, there are some additional uses which I listed in the staff report, which are allowed in the CG zone. Um, but a lot of those, uh, typically would want to be somewhere where you have access or visibility. But they would be allowed if a future land. That is something to always bear in mind. The real reason for the rezone, as he mentioned, is that lot coverage. The CG doesn't have the same maximum lot coverage that the SC one and SC two does. So this would allow for them to be more flexible in, um, their uses. The future land use, uh, plan does call for community commercial here, which the CG zone is appropriate in. And while this is now the subdivision or a site plan, they have provided us a concept plan for how they would like to develop this if it is approved. Again, these are examples of the elevations. That's something we'd flush out more through a DRC and planning commission process in the future if this rezone is approved. Uh, next step for this project, uh, they'll take you the recommendation from tonight. We'll go to city council for a public hearing and decision. If that is approved, then the site plan and the major subdivision will go through that standard process, including coming back to this body for a public hearing and then staff level approval of the final site plan and final subdivision. Uh, so there's motions here. There's, uh, two recommended motions. Uh, in case the planning commission decides that you want to recommend approval or recommend denial, both of those motions are included here. And with that, happy to answer the questions the commission might have.
Commissioner Allen?
Is there a means similar to a master development agreement with commercial that we could put together that would stipulate there's? I understand we're not looking at the site plan today, but I do recognize that changing this zoning is going to open it up to certain uses, right? So I'm looking landscaping flow of the, the site, some of those kinds of things that I find concerning. Not necessarily part of the motion, but anything like that that we could look at?
No, in the past, we might've done like a zoning condition or something. That's not allowed anymore. It's not something we do. So it's really, uh, yes or no, you like it or not? And then trust that if it is something that we approve, that the ordinance is which we have in place for, all of those things are appropriate enough to address those concerns.
Have you had, uh, and maybe this is better for the, the, um, applicant, but have you had conversations, uh, regarding, are they waiting for this zone change in order to put more money into putting together the site plans? Or would they try to do both at the same time? Does that make sense?
Yeah, if the rezone is approved, they will come through with the site plan and the subdivision at the same time. They're eager to get going, but, um, you know, we actually already started to process those applications and then we, we got to the lot coverage and that was a big thing for them. So they decided that it was a good time to put those on hold and make sure we got the zoning entitlements in place, so they could have, uh, more lot coverage than is currently allowed.
I, I guess what I'm saying, I, I feel, I would feel more comfortable approving the zone change at the same time as the subdivision and the, the development plan. Is that something that you've, that, that might be in the cards or is that, no, we need to have the zone change in order to know that we're going to put the money into it and have some capability of doing this?
Yeah, so we, we need to have the entitlements, uh, in place first. I mean, theoretically they could come back that way, but we've already noticed this, that would push them back several weeks or months because we'd have to renotice this and take it to city council. There's also some engineering that's required at that point, and we really don't like to require all of that expenditure of additional money for something that's not even entitled yet.
And then you run into another issue of, because two of the processes don't require city council, subdivision or site plan, where the legislative decision does. And then if you approve them all, then it's dependent, then his own change is dependent on something or a subdivision is dependent upon its own change. So, uh, people can lay out a lot of money for something to get denied. So it is a, it's just probably not a good policy to start doing that, so.
And, and this would not require a development plan. And technically it's a, it's a down zone, right? Uh, my understanding is SC two in particular is a much higher level of commercial zone, right, than a CG zone. And, but I think part of it is that it's just what fits for the size of piece. I mean, I'm not the planner here, they're over there, but, but I would assume that typically in SC one or SC two, uh, a more ideal piece would be much larger, right? And a smaller piece might be more conducive to CG. But under the current law, we have to be very careful with requiring development agreements when they're not specifically part of a, a special zone that, that requires one or if there's a development plan or if the applicant has requested the development agreement or if there's something specific already in mind that needs to be negotiated. If we're trying to use a development agreement for something other than one of those reasons, recent changes in state law make it a more of a dangerous thing to do. So that's my other thoughts on, on this regard, so.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hatch?
I would just like to say thank you for, to Taylor for presenting it like this. I really liked how you laid out what the next steps are. Uh, it was very well presented and very concise and really directed us on what our job was here tonight. So I appreciate the way you, um, pulled all that together. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to go make a motion unless someone has any, oh, public hearings, so sorry.
I would like to just go on the record as saying that, uh, I'm in favor of this project. I would like to just go on the record as saying that I'm in favor of this project. Uh, primarily because the property has been undeveloped and it's been there and available for a long time and undeveloped. Uh, and according to the staff report, it's undeveloped because of the weird weird shape of the property and not a lot of retailers are going to want to go into a situation like that where they're not more visible from the road and so forth. Uh, so I'm happy to see a proposal coming in that uh creates a better use for that piece of property. Questions? Okay, we will open now to public hearing. Anybody in the audience? No? Anybody on phone or on on zoom? Okay, public hearing is now closed.
All right, I'll come back. I would like to make a motion. Um, if the planning, uh, I recommend approval. Oh, if the planning commission, I do recommend approval of the rezone. The following motion is appropriate. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the Victory Builders rezone rezoning two point five four acres located at thirteen ninety west, nine thousand south from Neighborhood Shopping Center SC one and Community Shopping Center SC two to general commercial CG to the West Jordan City Council, subject to all requirements of approval.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's four, four in favor, one no. The motion carries.
Does, do we have to have a reason for the no? Okay, thank you.
Next item is text amendment regarding lot line adjustments. Mr. Gardner?
Sorry, I had a senior moment there. I am old, okay? And so, um is the commissions probably aware, you know, the legislature they really like to change laws anymore. Um, I think when I first started in this business, you might see a change to LEDMA every five, maybe mostly around every eight to ten years and but it seems like, I don't know, Scott and Duncan, every year we have a slew of bills that are either presented or threatened to be presented. Um, you know, for uh controlling municipalities. And while municipalities are creatures of the state, you know, it it does. Um, I still think government that's closer to where the jurisdiction is is better than someone that is spread out all over the state. And so that's where I'll leave that. But this is, this amendment tonight is purely to be in compliance with state law, but it also allowed us to open up the lot line adjustment process to look and and kind of clean it up a little bit. Now, a lot of the changes in state law, we're able to accomplish without amending code. Uh, we can adjust processes or policies to be compliant with with state law and just fit it under the the ordinance. However, this was a uh, something that we really couldn't. And so uh, and this is just, you know, the the yellowed portions are some of the things we added in here that uh, we feel will bring it in more compliance with uh state law and also is good policy. Uh, you know, as line three says there, it says cities land use regulations rather than the zoning ordinance. And as the planning commission has been involved the last few years, uh, it used to be that just the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Those were the land use regulations, but now as you realize park standards, engineering standards, you know, all those things have been adopted or recommended and adopted by the city council as land use regulations. And so we look at everything when we approve something anymore. And number six, the lot line adjustment otherwise complies with all other requirements of law, including, you know, state code and so or related or successor provisions. And so what that does is it kind of covers us now that uh, with this rapidly changing world that uh, we don't have to come back every year and change the la- the lot line adjustment because it will comply with successor provisions. And then it used to be the lot line adjustments were submitted to me as the zoning administrator, but now they're submitted to the community development department. So they go through a process with all of uh, you know, it goes through, you know, planning, engineering, fire, real property, as you talked to tonight, you know, Dave Clements looks at all these because uh, we've got to make sure the easements are being complied with originally approved. Um, you know, we've updated our checklist with every application, and this is more of an education item for the planning commission. Every application that comes in, we always give them a checklist. And the checklist, what that does is that everything that is in pages and pages of code, uh, we put in that checklist and that's what determines a complete application. And so, you know, we've updated our checklist. Um, now, one of the things that a lot of communities don't do, but we, West Jordan has done for a long time, is we've always required a survey of property. Some communities just require, okay, you don't you're not going with a lot line adjustment, you're not going to violate the area requirement of a lot. And they hand them a legal description, but I can't look at a legal, the legal description tells me nothing. I need a picture. And if you can find anybody can decipher anything from a legal description without a picture, uh, they're pretty amazing because all they are is north and south directions and feet, you know? And so we still um require it to be illustrated. You know, where is the house? Where are the easements? Where are the utilities coming in? You know, what's the setback? Because that's just good practice. And that that way you can determine that it is not violating the land use ordinance, you know? Is there, you know, not a lot of residential properties in the city have uh, city-owned utility easements running through them, but some do. You know, and that you can't determine that by a legal description alone. It has to be on that picture or the subdivision plot or something like that. And then finally, you know, number four is an agreement or deed in the form acceptable by the city. And, you know, and our our legal department determines what's acceptable by the city, you know, to be recorded. Now, we just look at the deed, but it is up, that is not the lot line adjustment approval. The deed is what comes after, and that is up to the property order to record that deed. And it gets, it's it gets complicated because just because someone records a deed changing their lot, it doesn't change the plot that was recorded. Uh, so there's something added to the description that, well, this lot line was adjustment was done uh, at this time and a good title company will pick that up, but you have to remember, the only way that a plot can be amended is by plot amendment, and that would still have to come to the planning commission. But state law allows for things such as lot line adjustment because it's less work. It's quicker supposedly, and it accomplishes the same process. And of course, a lot line adjustment or the deed has to be signed by all record owners. And that's just good practice because of private property. So so these are some of the cleanup issues. Some of the things we're now we're adding uh, that are out of state law. Um, or is good practice for the city. It said the zoning administrator should consult with other appropriate city staff and should review the lot line adjustment application. So these are taken in just like any other application. They're reviewed for completeness based on the checklist. Is there an application affidavit? All of that complete application is a fee paid. You know, and then it's it's dispersed to other departments, engineering, fire, real property, GIS for them to review also. Because as much as I want to be the all-knowing font of knowledge, I'm not. And there's people at Western that do their very specific jobs very well, and one person can't do that. Like you saw Dave Clements tonight, does amazing work, but I would have no I still don't understand completely his job, you know, and but he is very good at it. And so the zoning administrator shall approve a lot line adjustment application if the exchange of title will not result in violation of any land use regulation. Now, that is something that is being added. Before, as I said, we required a survey. State law now allows titles to be exchanged between adjacent property owners. And what that is, is basically a legal description. You give me this and I'll give you that. But we still require a picture. Some municipalities don't, but I think that is bad practice to do that because you can't in my estimation, and I'm going to say this again, you can't determine if land use ordinance is being violated from a legal description. You have to have the picture. So we're still requiring that. If a lot line application is approved, the city shall record a notice of lot line adjustment approval in the office of the county recorder, which is approved by the zoning administrator, recites the legal description of both properties resulting from the exchange of title and a notice of the lot line adjustment approval recorded under this sec- okay, but sorry. So I got ahead of myself. So we'll record a notice that it's been approved and all that has on it is yes, we've approved this and it has the legal descriptions. Then they, the county can figure out how to adjust the the lot lines, you know, by the the survey. But we still require the survey. Now, they can go record that survey if they want, and that will act in the same purpose, and we will recommend they do that because they paid for the survey, so they may as go record that rather than doing this exchange of title. But if somebody comes in and says, I just want to do an exchange of title, great. We will still do the approval document whether it's the exchange of title or the recording, the survey. Now, I know that's confusing, but I understand it, so it's not confusing to me. And and then, uh, this is where the part where Dave, you know, this is his expertise. A notice of lot line adjustment approval recorded under subsection C C does not act as a conveyance of title to real property. So the property owner still has a step to do after this. That is not the city's responsibility. We approved the lot line adjustment uh, which doesn't change anything. They need to record a deed uh, with the county that exchanges real estate. So you can see where the planning document protects the city's interest by the by making sure the the ordinances aren't violated. It still doesn't change property boundaries. They have to do that on their own, but they're approved to do that. And um, number two, their exchange of title to portions of the property identified in the approved survey and lot line adjustment by recording at the county recorder's office, the appropriate agreement or deed. And so they're still required to do that, but that's outside of our hands. We just give them permission to do that. Uh, the county won't record that deed without that letter, you know, that lot line adjustment. So that's really not work. We don't review deeds. We just review the survey. And that's how we determine that nothing is violated. I know that's a long, lengthy lot of reading to you. But I understand the process. The rest of the staff understands the process. And so we're asking that the planning commission look at this and then recommend approval to the city council to keep us in compliance with the great state of Utah in which we all live. So do you have any questions for?
And Larry, uh, when it was pasted in, some of the numbering got skewed, right? But it's clear, it's obviously C one, two, three, and four, but somehow it went one, 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 four, but.
The numbering is goofy. This isn't the ordinance. This is my hurried attempt to do a
Just the PowerPoint, right? In in the actual, yeah, main document.
I got one quick question, Larry. So, and this is kind of a hypothetical, kind of get my small brain around it. So if I want to like change my lot line with my neighbor, basically I just go to the city saying this is what we want to do, record it with the county, and it doesn't have to go before any formal No. such as the planning commissioner or the city council.
No. Uh, lot line adjustments are approved administratively at a staff level, not, they don't go to the planning commission. Now, if they, if you wanted to amend the plot, say I want this additional guarantee, then it would come to the planning commission at that point because you're amending a plot. Um, so yeah. You're just do it at a staff level. That's the way it is now. This just adds a little more, another way you can record that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Larry? Okay, this is uh, under the heading of public hearing. Does we do have to have public hearing for this? Okay, public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the chambers on the phone or on zoom that wishes to comment? I'm seeing those. Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Helen?
You wouldn't happen to have the motion on this, would you?
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas does. Thank you. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to city council for this application.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
As is your custom. We are adjourned.